Good evening and welcome to the Georgetown School Committee meeting of Thursday, January 22, 2015. If we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will begin the meeting with the approval of minutes, which include the regular session minutes of January 8, 2015, budget and finance minutes of January 12, 2015, governance minutes of December 4, 2014, public relations minutes of November 13, 2014, and public relations minutes of December 18, 2014.
So moved. Second.
Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. And I would also like to entertain a motion to approve the acceptance of warrants number 29 V-15 and number 30 P-15.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move right along to our student rep. Vanessa?
Right now, the students are finishing up on our midterms. Like, we had them all this week and our last one's tomorrow for our pre-look exam. And we have a half day after that for the high school, or 8 through 12, so that's a good way to break off the stress.
You deserve the half day after all that.
And then, all the sports are coming back into deeper practices now that the midterms are coming to an end, and the drama club's starting up, so if you guys want tickets to the show, feel free to get those online.
It's always a fun time. It's a great night.
They said it's a funny, like, it's humorous, you know, humorous.
It'll be in the newspaper soon, too. We just had them come talk to us.
That's good. So you guys have been busy, but doing well with getting back into the swing of things after the long vacation.
Yeah, definitely.
It must've taken a little bit.
We're gonna have Teddy come back, but he didn't get the grant that he initially wanted. Remember, he came before you? But the light department made a donation, the GEF gave him $10,000. He wrote another small grant. So if you go into the auditorium, we actually have beautiful lights. He got the, was a panel he was looking for. He has that all set up, and so he's figured out ways to get the funding to do most of the project, the way that he had conceived of it. So he'll come back and he'll tell you exactly, but when you go, if you go to the show, you definitely will see enhanced lighting, which is always something that we wanted and hoped for. We usually rent lights, actually, but we won't have to do that this year because of Teddy.
That's awesome. Good for him.
Good for him. I mean, he really was tenacious about it, and, you know, Carrie was very helpful, and Mike was very helpful in helping to talk with the light department and...
Yeah, and that was a great donation to them.
That's a huge donation, yeah.
They're really, I mean, they've been great with the turf field and now this, so...
Yeah.
But Teddy's a remarkable child.
I told him we're not letting him graduate. He didn't like that. He didn't like that idea.
That's funny. Good, I'd love to see him back.
Yeah, we have so many kids that just do amazing things. You know, today Julie and I met with, you probably don't know Nick, but he works, Nick graduated from Georgetown, has gone to Harvard, has gone to Dartmouth. He's actually one of the people who interviews people that want to go to Dartmouth, so he's actually interviewed, one of our students at Georgetown got admitted to Dartmouth, but he taught, he interviews, you know, local students in the area, so he's working for the fire department right now. And he's taken on this task of townwide, looking at how CPR is delivered and, you know, helped get AEDs in some locations. And what he wants to do is work with Julie and I and the school on doing, teaching students CPR and actually allowing them to get certified. So we're working, you know, on that plan with him, but he did tell Julie and I today that he's trying to get into medical school. He wants to be an emergent from all the work he's been doing, he wants to be an emergency room physician. So, but, you know, I mean, he came out of Georgetown and he's just, if you meet, if you ever met Nick, he got the Citizen Scholar, actually.
So how long ago did he graduate?
Peter, was that, Nick, five years?
Oh, nine.
Oh, nine.
Oh, okay.
Oh, nine. But, you know, if you meet him, he's just, and he graduated from Georgetown, he got the Citizen Scholar.
I'm not surprised. You sound like you're surprised.
I'm not at all surprised, but I feel like I always want to point out to people that, you know, all of our students do well, but there are some students that, you know, a lot of people question, you know, like, can you graduate from Georgetown and go on to do those amazing things? And, you know...
Well, we've seen it recently with some of our graduates.
All the time, we see it. So I just always like to recognize students, especially students who are giving back to their town, like, through the fire department. I mean, wasn't he articulate, Julie? It was like, an amazing...
That's awesome.
We had an amazing time with him, and, you know, I just love it when, you know, people give back like that. And Teddy, you know, he doesn't get anything out of that, he's leaving, but, you know, he'll have a legacy, you know, of, you know, that's the kind of students where, you know, we're trying to give kids opportunities for that. And he's just a remarkable example.
And I love to see that board, and I always tell people to go into the school and take a look at that college board, because it's very impressive.
Yeah.
It really is.
Peter, how long have they been doing that board?
Five, six, seven.
I mean, they've done it eight years that I've been here. Have they been doing that, the board with the colleges? Maybe Nora can help.
Forever, that I've seen before, all my time.
Before your time, yeah.
Oh, wow. Yeah, I love that.
I do, too. Every time I go, I check it out.
That's great.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, um, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to talk about anything on the agenda? Okay, thank you. Okay, we have Mrs. Nora Cannon. Hi, Nora. Lana.
Hey, yes, from the art department.
Thanks for coming.
And I am gonna speak for my students because...
Yeah, sure, sit right down.
Because they had to work tonight.
Oh.
And they couldn't get off, those hardworking Georgetown students, right?
And he's studying for their dance, maybe.
Yes, exactly, and all that. So I understand that you might have received some paperwork on this, and I'm here to answer your questions and kind of give you just a little bit of an overview. For some of you, most of your faces are familiar. My name is Nora Cannon, I'm in the art department, and yes, I remember that board from over seventeen years ago, since I've been here.
Okay, there you go.
I don't know how it got started, we'd have to ask Joan about that one. But to give you a little background, the National Art Honor Society has been, it's like all honor societies, where they have a charter, and we have the National Art Honor Society in the high school. It's a group of students that, some of them might be thinking about going to the visual arts, but they have a strong interest in the arts. Some students might be in an art class, or maybe they like to come and do some after-school club activities, because they're not in an art class, so it gives them an opportunity to be creative. Some of the things that, like all National Art Honor Societies, part of their charter is to do community. We painted mural in the school. We're gonna be doing some work possibly with the new ID at the library, but I don't want to let any cats out of the bag. But the thing is that we do things in the school, and they learn about art for their own personal interests, and that's kind of in a little bit of a nutshell. What has been talked about for the past couple of years, and there is a little more to that, is the idea of taking a field trip, a big field trip. And so we've been kicking around the idea of going to New York, and this year, they said, is this gonna be the year? And we said, we'll make, try to make it happen. So in order to make it happen, they started last year, I should say, one of the things they're doing, and I didn't have a flyer, and I apologize, we are doing a family, a parent-child creative night. We're doing it on Friday nights once a month. If I've seen any of you, nope, your children are a little older. But basically, it is, the National Art Honor Society runs it. There was one just last Friday night. Parents don't leave, they stay with their child, and they do an art activity. And the idea there is, is to encourage creativity with the child and the parent, and teaching them to do some new things and how to work with their child. And it's been very well-received. Matter of fact, the kids are raking in the money. I don't know what other way to put it, but they're, yeah, I mean, we had at least a dozen families last week, and sometimes we can have, one time, we had at least sixteen children, that means sixteen adults there, and then I have all my high school students planning everything, helping with the supplies, and then, of course, helping the children and their parents. So that has been...
How do you advertise that?
We send, with permission, in the children's backpacks, a little flyer, and then we do one of the online signups, which, their name escapes you right now, but everything's done online.
Boys grade.
And it's pre-K through third grade.
Okay.
Yeah, it's for the little guys. It would, we've had parents ask if we can do it for the older students. We'll get there. You know, it's for the little ones.
Charge more.
Yeah. Oh, okay.
But I think, you know, like, fourth grade still is interested in that kind of stuff.
Oh, they are, they are, but it's more...
You can have to handle, who you can handle at this point, right?
Yeah, and again, the group wanted to do it for the little ones, so that's what we've done. So that's consequently, when I had passed this on to, I know I had spoken to Principal Lucia, and he kind of said, this cheap? I said, well, we have some money in our account, because the kids have really worked hard. And I think that shows their devotion to want to really go on the trip, and how much they want to raise money for the National Art Honor Society. So what I did for you is gave you a breakdown. I know I can talk to you further on that. I've given you an itinerary that I have called everywhere, along with the President Tatiana, and really explored the best way for, A, the students to see as much culturally and artistically, B, to always be conscientious of the monies. Many of these young students want to go, but sometimes parents are not, well, it's both circumstances. I have some students that might not be able to afford to go if it was very high, while others would have no problem, but we really did try to do it very, very reasonable to include as many that are on the National Art Honor Society as we could. So I'm gonna rattle on, so if you have questions, because I want to be careful with your time. Now, there is something on the breakdown sheet. Mrs. Dodge, the other art instructor in the high school, has a portfolio class. Again, some of these kids are part of the National Art Honor Society or aren't, and we wanted to, again, open it up for them. Again, those are the type of students that are putting together portfolios for visual arts, or very strong in the arts. So their price is slightly higher, only because they have not helped raise money for the National Art Honor Society. We understand that if this does go through, the National Art Honor Society Board will have to vote, and if approved by them and their minutes, they'll agree to this also. Let's see. The itinerary is, we are requesting a Friday off, which we would leave taking the bus from South Station, and we would arrive just in time to have a light lunch and go to the Museum of Modern Art in the Whitney, and do some things that evening, wake up bright and early Saturday morning, ha, 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 and get them going right away to the Soho Galleries and see some sites in New York. We are hoping, weather permitting, to do Ellis Island and Statue of Liberty tour, because I really think that's such a cultural enriching experience. I've had the pleasure of doing that, and I really would love to see the students do that. And then backs up probably fairly late on Saturday evening. We want to squeeze in as much as we can, but I do want to get them home by midnight.
That is a lot.
I love the fact that you have so many free things. I think that's great that you did that.
We search for those.
Yeah, I think that's great.
But ironically, if you sign up for one of those expensive bus tours, and you look at all the places they go, most of them are free, but they charge you because you're on the bus. So the kids are gonna learn how to ride a New York bus with me as their leader, not the paid expensive tour bus, so...
Do you have other chaperones?
Yes, there'll be two of us, and we are hoping for ten students. Obviously, if we get an overwhelming response, I could open it up to a parent chaperone. We're hoping for ten to twelve. I would be a little surprised if it was a lot more than that, honestly. And this is our first year doing it, so like all trips, it will probably gain momentum.
Now, were the kids responsible to get into South Station on their own, or...
What, we've already talked to a couple of parents with very big cars, because we already...
Shuttle them in?
Yes, because we've already looked into that, taking the, train from Raleigh unfortunately has really gone up. I don't know if any of you have taken the train from Raleigh lately, but it could cost... Well, quick story, when I take kids to Boston, I just look at the conductor, and I say, they're all my family, can't I get the family rate? And usually, I can get a cheaper rate, but it still can cost ten to twelve dollars a student.
Yeah.
Which, by ten, that's, so, we are, like I said, talk to several parents with very big cars, and that will save a lot of money. And we are gonna type all that up with all, a little more, obviously, the parents are gonna sign off on everything and exec...
So parents on Saturday night will be meeting you at South Station around midnight?
Yeah, very nice parents, aren't they?
Very nice.
They'll have dinner in Boston.
Very nice.
They'll have dinner in Boston.
They'll go do something, right?
I just think you, we've, and I'm returning a very tired child, so, you know, what more, you know, what...
It might be easier if you take them back to your house, and they come on Sunday.
I wouldn't mind, Sunday morning.
Just saying.
There's plenty of floor room, they can, bring your sleeping bags, right?
It looks like a lot of fun, and the weather should be relatively good.
Well, that was it, we're hoping, and if a lot of this is stops on the bus, we even have it mapped out to a great hotel. Matter of fact, it's called a pod, and it's a dorm-type situation. It's very new and modern, and it's by the Museum of Modern Art, and it's a pretty cool concept. So I got them in for like twenty-five bucks a night.
Wow.
Cheaper than the Y. It's amazing. So you're saying you want to come as chaperone?
No.
Oh, okay.
I didn't hear that.
Have you, for the Statue of Liberty part, this is just a random one, have you, are you planning on going up, or just to the island itself?
Okay, no, for that price, I think I got the two level, that we can see the downstairs of the Statue of Liberty and the one.
Just 'cause I know tickets are a lot more complicated than the, well...
They go on levels.
But also, they sell out incredibly...
You have to reserve, way in advance.
Yes, you have to reserve, and...
Anyone can get to the island, but...
Correct.
Yeah.
Right, and it makes it a little tricky, as you know, with our payment system, to reserve some of these things, but step at a time.
I just want to make sure, yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah, we looked into the definite levels and the trip. Matter of fact, I haven't sprung it on them, but they're probably gonna go there first, so we don't, you know, they stop, they cut off at a certain time and bring you over. Yeah, so, but again, I'm here to answer any questions, hopefully gain your support, and I know the students, if they were all here, would be very enthusiastic to say their point of how they really look forward to this and think it would be a very educational experience.
I think it will, too, sure, it will be, yes.
It's like a great trip. And you're contemplating a Friday night Broadway show?
Well, we want to leave that as an option. There have been two students that said they'd like to, but I know most, some students couldn't afford.
Right.
So with two chaperones, we figured we're gonna play it by ear again, and we'll have a meeting, and if it would work out, and we always tell the students, if...
And there's no group rate tickets?
Again, if...
People have never tried to pay a group ticket.
You know, you can find out so much on the internet, but when you're there, but...
Sometimes you, if you will call, you'll...
Right, it's called will call or rush tickets. You can go out in Times Square, usually have to do that the morning of the performance, and it gets, again, a little complicated, but some students ask, and again, we're there to, you know, encourage them, we want them to learn and learn the ropes, but like I said, with two chaperones, that would work, yeah.
If the weather is absolutely horrible, I just might recommend the, taking the students to the Metropolitan Museum and then...
Right.
Wougenheim, which is like very close by, and be all indoors, and it's huge, and there's a lot to see, and...
Exactly.
A classic New York attraction.
That's exactly what we thought we would do, instead of Ellis Island, Statue of Liberty, or something like that. We would spend that money inside.
Happened to be going, and there's a storm predicted, or, you know, a loser predicted or something.
Exactly.
I hope there isn't.
Well, that's exactly what we have to...
There are options, yeah.
Right, and then to understand, we take the bus and we can't walk, and...
Right, it's a big city, it's...
It's very, yeah, they don't, yeah, they'll find out that first day when they're...
Yeah.
Two city blocks are pretty big in New York.
Or tend to underestimate how much time it takes to get from place to place in New York, yeah.
Right, right. So that's why I put under the fees, to bring the extra money for the bus fare. We're hoping to get that student rate.
Subways?
My money's on you, Nora.
The one thing I just, I also included in your packet, I wondered if we wanted, you know, not to bring up the French trip, but one of the things that we did discuss with our attorney around the French trip is, when we're taking students out of the school area, that it's kind of a good protocol to have a release of claims, not that we expect anybody to get hurt, but it just kind of protects everybody, and so I put the one in, we used for the French trip, just for your information, but if that's something, I mean, we certainly hundred percent support the trip, at least the administration does, but I do think, based on our recommendation from our attorney, we should, as part of the paperwork that Nora does with the students, we should, we can take the top paragraph and, you know, make it appropriate for this particular trip, but, you know...
Should we have a policy in our, that anytime there's a field trip where...
We could look at our overnight field trip policy in governance and check that out, but, you know, I just want to make sure that that might be a condition.
No, I would welcome anything like that, because I certainly would pass it by the main office, the field trip form, I mean, I, that's not my area of expertise, and so any way that you could help and make sure that I don't miss anything...
Yeah.
I used to take them on the AFS trips and had them sign off on everything and never had a problem, so, again, I encourage that.
Okay, great, so I just included it, in case that was something that, as, when you, you know, when you vote on this, if you, you know, if you support this, I think we should definitely get it to Nora with a slight amendment at the top, and then she can use it as part of her sign off.
Yeah, I think it's great, it sounds like a lot of fun.
It does.
Thank you for taking this on, I know it's gonna be...
Well, we hope it will be an annual trip, and like I said, grow. Yeah, let's hope for good weather.
Yes, let's hope for that.
Okay, so the chair will entertain a motion to approve the National Art Honor Society's trip to New York City as presented, with the stipulation that we do add that release and agreement in with the packet that goes out to parents.
Great.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Well, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, have fun, Nora.
Yes. Okay, we have Mike Anderson.
That's what she said.
Hi, Mike.
Hi, Mike, how are you?
Hi.
So we got Mike for two things tonight.
Yep.
Actually, three.
Three.
Wait, what's his name on there? This is a big night for him.
Why don't we do the update first?
So, I think you guys got the maintenance report a couple of weeks ago.
Yeah.
And just to sum it up, you know, we've been very busy over the summer and the fall. We've completed getting IDs for everybody in the fall, all the new staff, and the key access system, and that type of thing. We've been, we've installed some TVs in the high school for different classrooms and that type of stuff. We've, with all the extra water coming in in the fall, we added some new submersible pumps to the pearly basement, that was taking on quite a bit of water.
That FEMA grant that we are gonna get, once all those legal things get worked out, that's gonna help a lot, because it's a groundwater issue, so it's gonna require, I think the plan would be to put some pumps outside.
Kind of like a French drain around the whole building.
French drain around the building, yeah.
Push it away down to the brook, that's out back.
So you guys can do a French drain, can you?
No, this will be done by a contractor, as part of a FEMA grant, I think it was like...
Two hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, twenty thousand dollars, yeah.
Oh, you guys could do it.
Yeah, so, it's a big project.
Yeah.
And we've been lucky this year, and years past, the pearly gym has got flooded.
Yeah, I know.
Pretty, you know, like six, eight inches of water, so...
Yeah, that's crazy.
Thank goodness for that floor.
Yeah.
That it's designed, I mean, when it was put in...
The floating floor, and it just goes right back down after it.
Really?
Yeah.
For myself personally, it's been busy with, you know, we have all kinds of projects going on, as you guys know, the two school projects, the turf fields kind of coming to completion, and Joan and I have been working on the pearly roof project, as well as getting all those air conditioning units for the high school out to bid, so we can get that done before the new high school roof goes on, so it's been busy for maintenance, yeah.
And you've been going to training, so...
Yeah, we have a really big training schedule coming up with the new school.
Wow.
You know, so, hours and hours of training for all the maintenance staff, as well as the administrators, and, you know, people, different people in the school building.
Wow. And how is that met by your employees, like, the fact that they're all for it?
Oh, they're, they like it, yeah, they're all for it, yeah.
Looking forward to it.
Yeah, they're looking for it. Last week, we had a training on the gray water system, the new school's gonna collect rainwater to flush the toilets, so we learned how to change the feltedes and maintain, maintain that system over there, so, pretty interesting.
I mean, Mike also is a liaison, interfaces with all the projects we're doing with the various town departments, so, you know, he seems to, you know, have connections everywhere, so I think that's been a huge asset, a huge asset for us. And just, I know they're very involved in hiring, so we've got some positions that Mike and Joan have been very busy, very busy. But, you know, as we've had challenges, you know, Mike's always sort of been the one who took care of it, when the rats came, when, you know, when we put the, when we put the dirt over the hill, and dealing with, helping the neighbors, and, you know, just so many of those little things that, you know, just, he takes care of so much, off of the principal's plates, and Joan's plate, and my plate, that, you know, I try not to miss an opportunity to recognize what Mike does, because everybody in town says the same thing. They have complete confidence, if they tell Mike something, he will get it done, and he never asks for anything in return, which is...
Have you seen the top field? It looks nice up there.
It looks nice.
No, I haven't had the opportunity, but I'm going to.
We have to, we have to, we have to...
To clean up the back a little bit.
Clean up the back of the slope, but...
But from what I understand, it's bigger by thirty feet?
Oh.
I talked about that at the turf meeting the other night, and I think Peter Durkey had said...
Yeah, maybe, including the hill, though, but, I mean, it's not thirty feet of playing area, but there's a back that to sit on now.
I'm looking forward to getting up there and seeing it. The smaller field in the back, or the bigger?
Yeah, the smaller, the smaller.
Okay, that's the one, yeah.
But it's also, I think they were talking about, it's, how much did it increase, like, six to eight feet, it increased those fields, so they can almost have a full, they can almost have a full-size soccer field up there now. So actually, that was an unintended benefit, right?
Benefit of the fair project, yeah.
But, yes.
That's great.
And Mike's also been talking a lot with town around, you know, shared maintenance and what kind of positions, you know, and that was, that's not been a small project either, you know, but, you know, just the meetings and just the goodwill that's been, you know, exchanged, and, you know, the data that's been collected, and, you know, I think the discussions have been very data-driven, you know, they've been very much based on need, as opposed to position, you know, so it's like, really, I think Mike's been instrumental in sort of having people in town believe that the schools and the town could share maintenance and coexist nicely.
Well, I believe that.
Yeah.
Um, yeah. Tell me how close we are to that.
Jim Lacy asked us to put some of it into the to the budget and I I think we'll probably discuss it more as we get closer to budget season.
Cause we have been talking about it for a while.
Yeah.
And it's crazy that.
So he was looking for us to add a HVAC technician to do townwide stuff for all the school buildings and the um town buildings.
And the custodian and the maintenance person.
For the new school.
Addition of those would allow us to then do the town buildings.
Yeah.
As well. So where are we with that, Mike? I mean, I I guess it hasn't gone close to a vote, I think it's just been in the discussion phases. But it is somewhat budget-driven, but it couldn't happen, just so you remember the structure, it couldn't happen unless you voted
Right.
to agree to to to, nope, you have not voted, no, you have not voted to completely go into a shared maintenance agreement. The town did three or four several years ago. But the, this came up uh previous to the override and the committee at the time did not have enough information and rightly so, they made the decision not to do it. Uh not to, not to commit to it at this point, to keep the door open and the discussion happening, and we've been doing that for years. So it's really a matter of at some point, you know, if it if it is going to happen, there would need to be a, you know, an agreement written up, come before the committee, the committee would have to decide, do, would you want to approve it, and then, of course, the town would have to fund it. But there's still some questions like, would it be the town or the school that would run it? Our proposal and the proposal of the little group that's been working on this is it makes sense for the schools to take it on. And then, but there's a certain number of staff that you have to have in order to do it right. And so the budget, budget discussion does come in, come into play, so I think.
I'll follow up with Jim and.
Yeah, would you follow up, Mike, so we can we can see, because if it was gonna come before the committee, you would wanna have that happen before town meeting.
Yeah.
Right, because the town meeting would then wanna vote on whatever appropriations would need to be made to support the central.
Maintenance.
Maintenance, right.
Great. Thank you for being so busy.
Why don't you talk about the Pembroke move, Mike?
Okay, so we've uh, I put some time in with Joan and we've discussed moving and we've talked to people who've moved other schools before. And uh what they recommend is kind of going with like a hybrid system and what that means is we're gonna use boxes and bins, and and the reason for that is the bins cost money to rent. So we can get the boxes ahead of time and have teachers pack up things they don't need, that they've used for the fall or winter ahead of time. And then we can store those and, you know, have them labeled and and color-coded so that they can just go right into the rooms in the new building. Um, the good thing about the bins is it it doesn't create any waste, but as part of the project, cause it's a lead building, a green building, we're gonna, all the boxes will get recycled and it'll all be tracked, so they won't be getting thrown out.
It's not gonna cost us anything.
Yeah, and it won't cost us anything.
Part of the building project.
Once we, once we get going officially, this is, it's gonna go out to bid um next month in in February. And then we're gonna have a meeting with staff to go over how to pack, what to pack, how to label the boxes and the color codes and that kind of thing. And then immediately, on the last day of school, the high school, because that whole bottom floor is gonna get redone, they're gonna replace the cement with uh like a like a, more like a waterproof cement, there's gonna be some kind of water-resistant cement poured so that the moisture can't get up. And then it's gonna get on new floors, so the whole bottom floor has to be emptied and all the furniture and belongings will go into trailers in the parking lot somewhere.
So it's not just Pembroke we're moving.
Wow.
Yeah. But at the. At the same time, we'll we'll be emptying out Pembroke because we only have till July first to empty out Pembroke, so depending on how many snow days we have, we might have eight to five working days or or we'll work weekends if we have to, but there might, there might be, you know, ten days total or or less, depending on when school gets out. To empty out Pembroke and that type of thing.
Let me just ask you a question about that. When Chief Beardsley came and we approved him to use the building, so if we, so it says here, we'll have approximately eleven days.
Yeah.
Um, including.
Yeah, I was counting Saturdays and Sundays, yeah.
So then, is it then, then that he'll use it?
No, it's during the time.
He won't have time, so, I mean, he won't have any time after July first, cause they'll be, they wanna tear it down.
So he'll be able to use it while we're in that moving phase?
Yeah, so, I mean.
We won't be able to be in there every day he's in there.
Whatever we clean out certain sections, like we'll do, you know how it has the different wings. We'll get one or two wings cleaned out as soon as possible and we'll let them use that end.
Cause I do think that's a great thing for him.
Yeah, cause I think.
It is.
Now, we're, we're, he's right in the process of the discussion, so we'll, we'll definitely work with him.
And then, you know, we'll just keep working in the other ends of the building and stay away, stay away from them.
So all our summer programs, our special, some programs will be at pearly this year.
Right, of course.
Cause we'll, you know, so, and we'll have technically some of that swing space. Right, because we're, he's gonna, they're gonna have to clear those kindergarten classes and they're going, they're going to, they're gonna be moved. So that there should be the ability to look at that space in a temporary fashion to help us with, you know, some programming that we might have as well.
Yeah, so be- because it's so busy, we're gonna be using movers to to help us do all this, obviously. And what Carol just said about the camps, I mean, during that time, it would seem like you'd have time to not empty out pearly, but we also have to get all the camps set up before July, because that's when they start, so.
Right.
It'll be a tough uh two weeks in June.
They can move fast, I've been through a couple of building projects where we've had to move like in three days. But we.
Yeah, it seems like chaos when it's, but it it gets settled and sometimes somebody's got a box missing, you find it, it's just, it gets done and moving companies that specialize in moving schools, they know what they're doing.
It just seems so overwhelming to me.
Right.
To see this on paper, I'm like, oh my goodness, is this really gonna be able to be done? I mean, I have full confidence that it will be, but I wouldn't wanna be the one doing it.
You'd be amazed at what the moving companies are like, though. I was amazed, cause we had to move a school, uh move everything out, move it to five schools, we closed a school, so we had to take all the stuff that was in there, move it to five different schools. And I had like a week's turnaround time because we had a rental, renter coming in. And the companies, they know what they're doing, you just stay out of it and let them, they talk to the teachers, they have all the color codes, they really do know what they're doing. And and uh.
And you pay for it, but.
And we can also hire sub, or we have some sub custodians that do work for us throughout the year, I mean, you know, we can hire some of the sub, summer help in, yeah.
And the key is to hire a mover who moves schools, that's why it's important to bid it out early.
Yeah, right.
Because they, you know, everybody wants to move in June and July for the schools, so.
It's the season.
Yeah.
I mean, the good thing is, we're not gonna be up against a timeline that a lot of schools are up against when they're trying to open a new school. Right, cause, cause technically, uh what we learned the other day when we had the FFNE meeting is that they're shooting for an installation of the new, of the new.
What is the FFNE?
Sorry, sorry, they have their, they have their.
Yeah, that we're learning.
We do, we're learning, um furniture fixtures and equipment. So um that process is now out to bid. Uh so they're planning to have the installation of the materials in May. So you can't move any boxes until May, like, so we, we could, the moving company will help us. But as long as we can get into the new building and the furniture is where it needs to be, you know, boxes that are already packed could potentially be moved, we won't necessarily have to move everything in like one week.
Yeah.
So our hope is, if everything falls into line in that timeline, that we'll have some flexibility. And, you know, we can store, you know, store some stuff there too, so. We'll see. But it is not gonna be a small undertaking.
And then just just one other thing, we were thinking about with the surplus furniture, whatever's not used by um the new school, and that's in Pembroke and we'd offer it up to all the town departments or whatever, but there'll still be a lot of student desks and chairs left, so. There is a, some companies out there that I'm, we're gonna be meeting with that take the furniture and they either recycle it or they'll find poorer schools that need it and they will let them use it, so it will go to good use. Instead of just being thrown out.
And some of the equipment will be used for the senior center and some of it we will keep for um the moving of offices at, especially upstairs where we, where we're gonna put tables for for a training, for our training center as well. But the school committee will have a role in that, so what Mike will need to do is, once we determine what's gonna be surplus, right, you will have to declare it as surplus, and then what we can do is the town department, so I already know some some groups that are interested in some of the cafeteria, you know, uh equipment. So, well, there'll have to be a process of how we decide, you know, who gets what and, you know, but you will have to declare it surplus before anything can happen to it, so.
Right, and then, but it's a really quick turnaround time, because when they wanna demolish that building, they don't wanna hear, well, we gotta take a stove out, nope.
No, but we, but if we have that process done in, like even April, right, where Mike brings the list and then you declare it surplus, then it's just a matter of.
So if a group wants it, they need to understand, you need to get it out by whatever.
If it's there on July third, it's not coming out.
Yeah, not gonna be there.
And and um question for Margaret. I don't want any like specifics, but you are still planning something, right, before the, the
For what, Bernie?
Demolition of the, of Pembroke?
Oh.
Something's in the works? Yeah. Okay.
That'll be on our list of things to report you.
You know, and we haven't, I haven't recently, I don't know if the celebration committee has, but I still want to explore um taking plants from some of the courtyards and doing some kind of either, you know, dig it up or or fundraiser, um so as much as possible to save. You know, unfortunately, I look out and I see, oh, look at that beautiful birch tree, like, that's not, no one's digging up the birch tree. But, you know, there's hosta and there's other grasses and there are things that can be dug up and, you know, taken, so. That is still, Michael, have that happen?
But that's something that we have on our list of things to report to us, so we have decisions about it, so.
I.
Yeah.
I just wonder if there's any landscapers in town who would want those trees, some of the trees, who could, who have the equipment to come and take them.
We have so many landscapers in town, too.
We have so many, I know.
Well, yeah, why, why wouldn't we?
We could ask, but depending on how well it's rooted, cause the courtyard's hard to get, any kind of heavy equipment.
Trees in the front of the school.
Yeah, the front of the school.
I keep noticing every time I'm there, I'm like, oh, there's another tree.
It's summer, but a lot of nice trees even in the courtyards.
Yeah, yeah, I know. Courtyards are beautiful, when they're trimmed up and, yeah, there's a lot of little um benches and, you know, so we need to think about those things, yeah.
Okay, okay, great, so we'll move along to the um early roof, pearly roof.
And uh, in the notes, Carol had said we were gonna be looking for an approval for the project to move forward, however.
That was the case when I wrote the notes.
Right, and we were going with the assumption of, um when we first met with the architect in August, whatever, um that he felt confident that we would not have to use slate shingles. That we would be able, that he would meet with the historical commission and um he said a lot of buildings today that historical buildings are using the synthetic slate shingles, I'm not sure I'm calling the right thing, but um Mike had a conversation with somebody on the historical commission, they were meeting last night. He hasn't been able to get back in touch with them, he wasn't so sure that the commission would agree with that, that originally the C- CPC funds were to replace slate shingles. But in the timeframe since the, the, the uh building was first investigated by um Mr. Hart, that was done in two thousand and ten or two thousand and eleven, the architect that we hired um believes that we need to replace the whole roof, not just a portion of the shingles. So.
Wow.
It's a difference, so although we were hoping, at the beginning of the week, we thought we would be looking for an approval to go with the synthetic shingles. We're not ready to go forward with anything right now. Um, we wanna talk with the CPC. Uh, we, uh Mike talked to um one of our owners, project managers on the Pembroke School, said, did you ever think about going with a reimbursement program from MSBA? They will reimburse for roofs, it's just a single project, they do single boiler projects, single roof projects. So that kinda just hit us this morning. So when I saw Carol's notes, I said, uh-oh, they're gonna think they're approving the project, we're not ready to move forward.
I would've been very surprised if if that synthetic.
Do you remember when he talked about it?
I brokered the whole deal.
No, but I mean, do you remember when the architect came this summer and talked about it?
Remember that, but I wasn't there for the whole meeting, so I could've missed that part. And I remember him discussing that in historic preservation, sometimes you can put in materials as long as they look like historic preservation, they'll fly, but when I was going through, I mean, I met with historical commission, we talked with a a historic, an architect that deals only with historic preservation. And um the discussion about the roof was always slate, because that's what's there now. So I, I, I would've been surprised if that flew, but, you know, I, it it sounds like we just need more time. But I hope we can sort of resolve it in a fairly timely fashion, because we've really been waiting to do this roof now for almost five years. I mean, I got funds five years ago and through no thought, fault of anybody's, you know, it, it just hasn't happened. And it's gotten more expensive, too.
Right, and so the, the, the proposal, the first page of the new proposal you have in your packet tonight, the first proposal is for three hundred and eighty-four thousand. That's for just the roof, and we had a lot of other work that needed to get done, and that's about all we have for money.
So we may be able to do just the roof.
Just the roof without doing the trim and.
Just make the trim and the pointing of the brick and the downsp- copper downspouts, um.
Phase two.
Phase two, yeah, but I would talk to the historic commission and I would talk to CPC about.
I was gonna say, would that change like the CPC?
Well, that's why you, we would wanna talk to them, they, they may ask us for an amendment. I think they want us to spend this money on this project, they approved it. Um but they sometimes, I think, understand you have to amend it slightly, if we tried to add something new to it, I think that's a problem. But if we, if we had to amend some of it, as long as, you know, we're within ballpark of what we said we wanted the money for, I think we'd be okay, but I still feel like it's something where we just need to engage everybody in the conversation about it. So we, we don't need an approval tonight.
Well, good luck with it.
Yeah.
Does the CPC money expire? Not expire, but does the?
Um, you know, they sort of, they sort of set it aside and encumber it, so they don't re-spend it, I don't believe.
But there's not a, to use by X date?
There might be a statute of limitations on it.
There is, I, I called Mike Farrell about that, because um when I was writing the bid specs for the architect, I was afraid that, you know, Carol had said, oh, this money was approved a long time ago, so I read through the language of the CPC and there is an expiration date, so I called uh Mike Farrell and he said, don't worry about it, they, they would never hold you to that and.
Okay.
Um, I think it's just a renewal process.
Okay.
So I, he didn't seem worried about that at all.
Okay.
Yeah, whenever I've updated Harry on the project, I've said, you know, Harry, we are gonna do it, you know, we're, it, we're, you know, we couldn't get the bids in last year and in the timeframe that, that the town was working with us on, it just didn't happen. And uh this year, we were committed to getting everything done in time. Best laid plans, right, so, it's gonna happen, though, it's gonna happen. And maybe it's, you know, good to have a teeny bit of a break, cause we, we have been pretty busy with, with the projects we've been involved in. Took on a lot. All good. Thank you, Mike.
Yeah.
So before Donna does her little report, I, I wanted to just quickly uh talk to the committee about, um, you know, I know several of you have been hearing about um concerns about the sixth grade music program, so I wanted to to let you know where we are with that discussion. Um, had an opportunity to speak with the music parents uh recently, which was, you know, which was great, I, I think everybody you know, was happy to sort of just hear each other and and get some accurate information, cause of course, there were some rumors going around that were concerning to people, understandably so. Um, and then uh, and then Margaret and I have been, you know, discussing it on an ongoing basis as, and I met with um Anthony Messina and Laura Laflamme, Tyler was teaching, so he couldn't come. But I met with them the other day, and then Tyler did send me some information on things, some thinking that he had supplied uh with, to, to Margaret, and then, of course, I reviewed it as well. So um, you know, in, in talking to, you know, everyone, I think that I just wanna reassure people that the intention never was to not have a sixth grade band. That was never the intention, never, there was never a discussion about that. The discussion, the discussion that is, the discussion we are having is that it's, it's not probably going to happen that we would recommend the current structure for sixth grade band and chorus. For a couple of reasons. One reason has to do with, we're gonna use an elementary day, so in the elementary day, uh it's not structured like the middle school day where there's multiple periods for specials. So, so we're gonna have a, a period for specials, uh but that's gotta be for art, music, PE, it'll be, everybody would have a rotation. We currently have fourth and fifth grade band, and Tyler could probably answer any questions about this, but we have fourth and fifth grade band either before or after school, it's very different years, different times. Um, and uh like a beginner's band and then something a little more advanced in fifth grade. And then when you jump to sixth grade, you have band every day. Uh and um the other period, you have PE, so you, you know, when you select band at the middle school, you don't, you don't get art and those other specials. Um, so that, that's sort of the transition, and then in seventh grade, you have it, I think, every other day, you don't have it every day. And then it keeps going. So, you know, understandably, what we're trying to do in all of these things is plan continuums, right, built, where skills get built. So in thinking about everybody's interests and what we think is, you know, best for children and that provides a transition, um, the thinking is that K through five would be as it is right now. So it would be um the music teacher um at the elementary school would do K through five the way he does it now, which is more of a vocal music and movement, he does some very creative things with, you know, integrating all of those. Uh, every, once a week, cause it, it follows a rotation.
Is that like a chorus?
Nope, it's a, it's a gen- gen- well, I shouldn't speak for you, Tyler, it's a general music, but what I've seen is that Tyler also does and both Jean Mattoon, remember, we also have Jean Mattoon at Pearly. They do a program where they have, it's building skills. It does involve a lot of singing, but it's also orf instruments and, you know, building instrumenta- am I doing all right here, Tyler? Instrumentation and, uh, you know, it's a very, you know, very comprehensive program. Um, so we don't wanna change that, we, we wanna see that continue. So in sixth grade, because in seventh grade, students choose band or chorus. And it's every other day or something, so you, you sort of make that decision. They, they had general music, but I think they're phasing that out, so you basically, they're, so sixth grade, right now, is a transition between the sort of general music and then chorus, chorus slash um band. and then chorus, chorus slash band. So what we're thinking is if we, in the sixth grade, if we treat the music period, so the once a week music period, where students can choose band or chorus, right? Then, once a week, the students would be able to do band or chorus. So we would not be doing the general music program. We would do a band and chorus as a transition to what happens from fifth to seventh. There would still probably need to be band before school, like is done with the fourth and fifth grade.
Sixth graders would have that.
But sixth grade would, what would be different is there would be some band during the school day in the specials rotation. The tricky thing that happens is, 'cause this is very complicated. People don't understand it. It's not as easy as just making a decision. There's a lot of nuances to it. That, and I've been working with Peter on this, because Tyler can't be teaching chorus and band in the same period, unless he can clone himself. I don't know if he's got that skill. I try that myself. It doesn't work. So, so it would require another person to do band or chorus, right? So because now we're losing a hundred and twenty-five students from the high school, some of which is the sixth grade, that resource could potentially be shifted. So what that would mean, because we have a rotating schedule at the high school, that it would have to be G block, which I verified with Margaret, that Margaret can schedule sixth grade specials in G block at the high school. So that looks like that could be a possible, you know, solution to the question. And it does seem like, here were the various interests. We don't want band and chorus just at the, at the beginning of the day, because now they have it during the day. It's part of the curriculum. You know, people will drop out. There were, there were a lot of questions raised, okay? So we can't get it into the, into the schedule every single day. But if we can get it in once a week as part of the rotation, as a way to transition to seventh grade, we feel like that's, and, you know, we've, we've sort of accomplished everyone's interest and everybody gets something. And we believe it's in the best interest of students. It also doesn't compromise the other specials, because it is important for the students to have art. It is important. And sometimes what happens, like I said, when you go to the middle school, and maybe it's more appropriate as you get older to be making those choices and narrowing your options. But at the elementary, we feel like it's the whole child. Everybody should get experience and exposure to all of the various specials. That doesn't diminish our value and importance and belief in the goodness of music. It just means that those other things are important as well.
So could a sixth grader, say, choose to do chorus in their daily, whatever their, as a daily special, but then opt to do band after school?
I don't know what would, I don't know what would stop you from doing that. You know, those are the logistics that we have to talk about. I'm still talking bigger picture. But, but that's, maybe that's a possibility. I don't know why that would not be possible, but again, the teachers might have a reason that I don't know about. But, so I don't, we don't have to get into a big discussion on this.
Well, it seems to me like Tyler's teaching a lot of before and after school. Like, I don't know that you have another time slot with all the different instruments.
Well, that's, again, that's the logistics, because it may be, maybe it has to be, you know, two days, three days. You know what I mean? Maybe it has to be fifth and sixth grade. I, I don't know. I'm not the band guy. So, you know, I wouldn't wanna impose, you know, my opinion on Tyler or the music department. But those are decisions that, you know, I'm only trying to help make the bigger decisions, right? So the logistics, as they say, the devil's in the details, that, that, that's where we really need help from, you know, the various people who are most directly affected by that and are gonna make it work.
So can I, I just, so my question on all this is, what does either a sixth grade band or a sixth grade chorus? Like, to me, it feels like a loss, like as a, as a parent of an elementary child who's getting music, this sort of broad scale music. And, and the fact that my child can do band after school, that's, that's, that's awesome. I love that. You know, it's a super perk. But it's that, I feel like, oh my gosh, now in sixth grade, she's gonna have to choose band or chorus? Is that, that feels like a loss to me, even though I get like people who, when you send your child to a new school, it's a new, okay, there's a new routine here. You're gonna have to make this choice. Well, that's.
You might have more of a loss if it was the way it is now, because if she was going to the sixth grade in the middle school as she is now, she would, she would have to choose band.
I get that. I get that. If she was going to the sixth grade at the middle school, there would be that issue of making a choice. But she's not going to sixth grade at the middle school. So her experience, from her perspective, is she is still an elementary school student. And while I understand at sixth grade, you might wanna start sort of shifting things a little in preparation for that move. Is it, is it not a loss for her?
I don't think we see it as a loss, because, you know, well, but it's not really a big, I mean, most of what they'll do in choral, choral music would probably be similar to what Tyler does. Most, when you say most of your program, Tyler, is music, is singing, vocal.
He spends about half the year, fourth and fifth grade singing.
Yeah. So, you know, I mean, they're still gonna have that opportunity. Again, we're looking for something that, you know, we feel is an acknowledgement of the challenges when you make a transition. Understanding that, you know, that we want there to be continuity. We don't want the schedule to be controlled by band, which is what happens sometimes at the middle high school. But at the same time, you know, the, you know, the middle and high school programs are very strong programs. So we, we do wanna make sure that we continue to support that.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so it's, it's really looking at what are the various interests? And how do we come up with something that we think is in the best interest of children? But things that are not the same as they once were are always a question of, is there a loss and to whom? And, you know, so I think our goal is to minimize the feeling of loss, but, but replace it with something that potentially, you know, has a different value, but still a strong value. So I didn't really put it on the agenda, 'cause I really wasn't gonna make a lot of discussion about it today. We were, I was gonna report on it on next, next meeting, 'cause we have a Pembroke update scheduled. But I know there was a lot of concern about it and there's been a lot of questions about it. So I figured it was just best today to sort of address it, so that everybody, you know, is aware that that's what we're, that's what we're currently thinking. And certainly, you know, if we put it on, next time you can, you know, comment and if there's anything you wanna see changed.
I actually, you know, it's so, I've been trying my best to sort of keep my finger on the pulse of this discussion to the best of my ability. And, but, and I never thought I would hear it as a loss until I just listened to you. It's like, wait, she doesn't get banned and, she doesn't, like, it's such a lovely, I think what you do with the kids is lovely. I love going to their performances. I think they're so enriching. They just, I don't want my baby to grow up.
So she should, so she should probably take chorus and participate in the band. And she'll have the best of both worlds and she won't have a loss.
I wanna go hear those little voices sing.
I know. I love it too.
I love it.
And to continue while throughout, you know, the, the, the program is wonderful. So when you go into the middle school, when she eventually goes there, the concerts are great.
Whoa, unbelievable.
It's not that, that the voices just crack at some point.
They get mature. Yeah, they're mature.
No, but it is, you know, I have always been a huge fan of the teachers that we hire for, for the position. And I know my kids have certainly enjoyed the time that they've, they've had with the music department. I appreciate the thought.
I just figured you might get, I refigured you might get some questions about it. So it'd be better to just talk about it now when people were getting concerned.
So the next meeting will?
You'll have another Pembroke update of the additional things we're talking about. Margaret actually has a coffee tomorrow that I'm going to. So it'll be interesting. I think that there are some people who, you know, have some questions. So we're gonna try, in every forum that we hold, to try to answer, you know, the questions as best we can, because.
What time is that?
Eight forty-five.
Eight forty-five to nine thirty.
At Pembroke?
At Pembroke, yeah. So we'll, we'll be doing that tomorrow. And then at one o'clock, we have our standing meeting that we have with whomever needs to be included in the discussions we're having at the time. So. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing that up.
You're welcome. You're welcome. Hi Donna. Hi Donna.
Good evening.
Good evening. The committee didn't wanna do it without you the last time, even though Julie and, Julie and Margaret volunteered to step up to the plate.
Are these different? They are. I included, because it's been a couple of weeks. We had another PD session with the teachers and we had some more data, so I just wanted to include that. So I thought I would start with a quick review of what response to intervention is. I know we have a number of community folks that are out there that may not have heard the first one. So basically what it is, it's a multi-tiered system that's incorporated within the general education school day that looks at both academics and non-academics for our students. We wanna focus on the gathering of data to guide the educational process for our kids using research-based interventions. So this is primarily, it's based on the Massachusetts tiered system of supports. And within that, there is the leadership and governance, curriculum instruction and assessments, human resource, professional development, standards, finance and asset management, as well as all of the student support pieces, which includes your family, community engagement and all those elements. So what we wanted to do is ensure that the RTI process isn't something that's just being done to the school or the district or the teachers. So we've taken a look at how can we incorporate everybody into this process of developing this within our school communities and our district community. The first thing we did was put together the district RTI team. And it's fairly comprehensive. There is the district RTI coordinator, which is myself. We have behavior consultants as part of it. We have classroom teachers from preschool through grade five that participate, the general education teachers, adjustment counselors, therapists, related service providers, school psychologists, the building principal, of course, director of curriculum instruction. We have reading and math interventionists. So basically what we want to do is take a look at everybody who might have some expertise in both the academic and the non-academic areas, so they would be part of that overall system. In an effort to ensure that the implementation of this follows a process, what we're doing is looking at three stages of implementation. Consensus building, infrastructure building, and then the actual implementation. So we're deep into the consensus building. This is where we've had professional development. We've brought a facilitator who's an expert on response to intervention and has implemented it in his own district as well as other districts. And we're starting the infrastructure building as well. So the first professional development day that we had with all of the teachers pre-K through, we've included grade six teachers too that we know are coming to the Pembroke School, was with Dr. Kurt Bates, who is our facilitator, who's helping guide this whole process. He came and spent a day with all of the teachers and the support staff and peer professionals to really kind of provide an overall understanding of what is RTI, what is tiered approach, what is the data that we need to collect, what do we do with it? What does all that mean and what does that mean to me as an instructor and to my students during the course of the day? So he went through all of those pieces. We discussed the mass tiered system of supports that we have and we utilized a survey that they have. The, Desi has created this survey to basically assess, you know, what is your level as both a district, a building, and then individuals in your understanding of RTI, the process of implementation and the roles that you play. So we gave that and did the stats on that, and I'll present that in a minute. We also took a look at, at the end of the day, we wanted the teachers to really sort of dig in and gain a practical understanding of what that meant. So we looked at the model curriculum units that, as you know, Dr. DeRoche has been working with the elementary school on those and had the teachers work in their groups to say, okay, what does this mean and what does it look like for tiered supports? What does my eighty percent of the standard core curriculum look like? For those students that fifteen percent who maybe need a little more double dipping or some extra help, what does that look like? And we sort of took a look at that and tore that apart a little bit to help with the understanding. Continuing in the consensus building, the results of the survey for the pre-K to the grade five teachers looked at three specific areas. School and district supports and their understanding of that, academic core components and non-academic core components. So there was a rating scale of one to four. One being, I really don't have a solid understanding of what this is. And four saying, I'm, I'm super comfortable with that and I understand it. So in general, the overall for the academic core components is a one point nine two. And if you're right around a two, that's good. We wanna see, to be at least at a two point O. School and district supports was a one point eight. And non-academic core components, which is your behavior, social, emotional areas, was a one point three six. And we'll talk about, you know, why the score sort of fell out the way they did. With regard to the academic components, there's the collaboration, school and family problem solving. And as you can see, the overall results of that are very good, because this is something that teachers do today. And they have an understanding of how do we work with families? How do we share information about their children with the families and collaborate together? High quality core curriculum instruction, again, it was a great score over two, two point three three, because again, it's something teachers are very familiar with. As we get into the next components, the universal screening and progress monitoring, that's something that's really new. We started that maybe about a year ago with our universal screener, our maps, NIWA, all of those pieces. So that's a brand new situation that teachers are getting used to, working with that. What does the data mean? What do I do with the data? The same with the research-based interventions and assessment. That's something that we're gathering. We're looking at, we're analyzing, and the flexible tiers of instruction and interventions. So those are new pieces that right now we're working on with the teachers. So it's not surprising that it would be a lower level of comfort for people in those areas.
So when would you see those numbers? Be going up, like, in reality, what do you think?
Really, at a minimum, you're looking at three years for a real solid implementation of the process, because there's, and we'll get into some of the subcommittees that we have, but there's a series of ways of approaching it and looking at it, finding out what the assessments, the instruments we wanna use, providing training, using professional development days. So it's a matter of training pieces as well.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Is two, and I know scales are different, is it two out of four? I hear that and I say, wow, that's not really that high.
Right. No, and I understand, but it's a general, you know, consensus of everybody who has a different level of understanding. So you're going to be looking at some of your brand new teachers who are just learning everything. And then you're going to be looking at teachers who have been doing it for a while. And then on top of that, you're layering other different areas, like the model curriculum units, the new assessment system. So looking at a two, I mean, that's where we wanna get to and then move on from there.
So if we're five years, ten years down the road, what's kind of the realistic? When do we say we're doing it right? It's working? It's where we wanna be. Is that a three? Is that a?
Yeah, you wanna look at a good eighty percent of your population having a solid understanding. Where the understanding is always gonna be, you know, a flux of staff coming and going and trainings that have to happen. New ways of providing interventions. So you wanna look at about, just like your tiered system, eighty percent, you know, are right there where you want them to be.
So I, Mike, I also met with Kurt. He came to my office to share these results with me. And, you know, they, they give it in a number of other places. And his interpretation was that these results are high, based on what he sees. So, and remember, this is a very initial implementation. The other thing that's sort of interesting when you, even though, if you can look at the two versus three, but if you look at the relative importance of where people feel strongest, just in these areas, it's consistent. He felt it was very encouraging that people felt that there was leadership around this, that the curriculum that they're doing was in, you know, in a relative strength. So they knew, okay, this is the curriculum, so now I can figure out how to differentiate based on the tiers. Financial and asset management was not a surprise to us either, because, you know, our teachers, rightly so, always sort of wonder about, is there enough resources? For example, if you're doing RTI and you have, you're looking at the tier three, you wanna have people that have high levels of expertise, such as reading specialists and, you know, math specialist, you know, highly trained special education teachers with very specific training. very specific training and specialized programs. And that's what they're worried about. They're worried about when we do this, we get it that we do one and two. But then is num- is what's going to be available in three there? And that's why that number, he he believes and I believe in, I think we, the team agrees that that's why that number is relatively low compared to the to the others.
And they shouldn't have a solid understanding, they don't, of the financial and asset management piece of a school district, so.
Right. If if our curriculum instruction, assessment and leadership and governance were point six seven, we'd have a different, we'd probably taken a different conversation and approach.
And then the non-academic core components are those pieces that include uh student behavior, social and emotional aspects of students' lives and how we can support them within the school. And again, looking at the collaborative um piece with schools and family, that's, you know, a very positive area. The other specific areas center on what's really brand spanking new for us in the district, looking at the tiered uh system of providing those global um assistance and interventions and data collection for students' behaviors, um students' emotional moments and how they're interacting socially. So really not just for Georgetown, for for the state of Massachusetts, this is really a new um approach and people are looking at things. And so we would expect not to see those numbers particularly high at this point. You know, and as we're working along to provide professional development, provide an understanding of where we're going to help support these students and their families, um we expect those numbers to go up because we will provide that knowledge, those interventions, you know, how do you collect data on someone's emotions or behaviors in the classroom?
I'm just wondering if you could um give us some kind of specific example, say, to illustrate what is meant by flexible tiers of support? So if you could just pull an example of a child who's a student in our schools and what does it mean in the life of that child that we have, we offer in our schools, flexible tiers of support? What does that mean?
Okay, so the tier one piece is where eighty percent of your students are having a success with the general core curriculum in the general classroom. Your tier two students also um takes place in the general education classroom, but they might need what we might call a double dose or double dipping of some instruction. So maybe they're having some difficulty with um fluency or they're having some difficulty with specific areas of mathematics or comprehension or pieces like that. So what we're going to do is formulate groups of students who, based on data that we've collected, provide them some interventions, continue progress monitoring and collecting data to ensure that they're.
I just want, I want to stop you right here.
Sure.
So so this means that the students are regularly being assessed by the classroom teacher. And is it the teacher who's analyzing the the results of these assessments and placing the students on these different tiers? And then reporting to you or to the principal or some instructional leader, oh, I've got these three kids are tier two and these two kids are tier three and I've got this one at tier one? And then at that point, is it out of the classroom teacher's hands and the
No, what?
Somebody is coming in to intervene, like what's, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah, you're trying to understand the structure.
That's a great question. What's the structure?
What does it look like?
So one of our subcommittees that we have as part of the RTI is the professional learning community. And within the professional learning communities, you're going to have, for example, your grade five teachers who are going to be sitting around taking a look at the data and analyzing those pieces and sharing information with each other with regard to um what each students can do and maybe formulating groups from there. So you might have several students from different classes that all may help in reading fluency or comprehension who will work together. And then you'll decide amongst your team who that's going to be. In addition, there's going to be other uh data teams that are going to analyze that, whether it's working with the um reading specialist, the literacy coaches, the principal. You know, Julie and myself will be involved in a certain degree of formulating this. So it's going to be a very fluid, data-oriented process where a lot of the training that's going to take place centers on how do you do that and how do you implement that?
That we have data, we're data teams is a structure. It could be a mult- a a team that looks at all different roles. Or it could be grade level four meets with the principal and the literacy coordinators to talk about what students in grade four, you know, are benchmarking, not benchmarking, what's the best way to provide the interventions? And then we're also, part of our discussion, because it's also multi-layered, part of our discussion is also what interventions are we going to use? So if I'm a student who's struggling with fluency, I'm going to, there's a different intervention for me
Sure.
than the students who are lacking comprehensive strategies, right? So part of, I think, why that number that was a a little low there is I think some of the the previous slides she showed is some of the teachers just aren't sure yet what the interventions are.
Absolutely.
So that's part of what we're working with.
And who's providing it?
And who's providing?
Right. And so if you see the subcommittees that we've taken, the uh district RTI committee, we've separated into four different subcommittees, which one is the professional learning community. One is um a committee that centers on mathematics, one is reading. And then the fourth subcommittee is on the non-academics, again, the social, emotional, behavioral. So we're initiating the math and reading in the non-academic by saying, what do we have in district right now? Let's find out, what do we have, what are we using? You know, what can we continue to use, what might we need? So that's a lot of the work that's happening behind the scenes. With regards to professional learning communities, that's something that's going to also be brand new, but it's very integral to what happens in a tiered system where you're analyzing data and people have to work together as teams. You know, to have a understanding and formulate who those groups are and what students are going to benefit from what interventions. Um so that's something we're um, we're going to be training people in that as well.
Can you, you explain tier one and tier two, what does tier three just quickly look like?
Tier three is where students have consistently um not understood either whether it's reading or mathematics, or they have significant behavior, social, emotional problems. And they need a really very specialized type of instruction. It may or may not be that they're referred to special education, but they definitely need smaller pull-out with special ed teacher or reading specialist and they're progress monitored more frequently and they're getting a higher rate of interventions.
So more one-on-one or a couple on one?
Correct.
Okay.
Absolutely.
And sometimes those services can happen in the classroom.
Yes.
It doesn't necessarily have to always be pull-out.
Okay.
It's preferred to have in the classroom if we can.
Right. Okay, thank you.
So a student would get referred to tier three after several interventions have not proven effective? And so now you need to work on different, more interventions.
And some of that we're looking at is like going to be six weeks, it's going to be eight weeks that we're trying things out and periodically collecting that data to watch what the trajectory is, whether it's increasing for students reading or if it's decreasing for poor behavior.
And the problem is it's not a check the box, everybody gets this. It's all tailored to be individualized, so.
Do you have like a software program that helps you track all this and keeps everybody, I'm just thinking like just the tracking?
Soon.
And the sharing?
Soon we will. We're actually looking at creating infrastructure to really.
I do, I do apologize if it does sound sort of like crazy, but it, we are doing all of these things simultaneously and I promise you, everything will come together.
It will come together.
But it's, but it's definitely not, you do one thing, then you do another thing, then you do another thing. It it really requires some um, can some things happening in different, at different times and uh.
And and how will parents be notified of, in 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 particular intervention or?
Well, that's going to be part of the process that we're going to develop is um how to notify parents. Now we have student assistant teams or teacher assistant teams where there are students who may need some extra help. And they'll study some of the data on that presently and, you know, inform parents and, you know, either send a letter or call parents or talk to parents. So we're looking at adopting some of those models that currently are in place and including those. You know, and when we get to the point um where we have sufficient information to share, we'll do a community night and invite parents in so they have a global understanding of what this really is. Because they really, you know, as Carol was just saying, there's so much to it and so much going on. Which is why it really will be a three-year process to get everything solidly in place so we can have it with fidelity for everybody.
And it, you know, I don't know if Donna said this, but you know, the important thing here is there are some things that are new initiatives. You know, there's a new math program or there's a new something that's sort of concrete. RTI isn't a new initiative. It's sort of a way of all the things we're doing, it's a process that sort of lays over it all. So it 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 has to do with instruction and implementation as opposed to new initiatives. But they're related, right? If you don't have the curriculum in place, if you don't have a a set of base best practices of what assessments work well for diagnosing certain things, if you don't have good intervention, research-based intervention programs and concepts, it, none of it works. So.
It has to do with focusing in on the students who are struggling in any way.
It also has to do with challenging stu- I mean, RTI isn't just about deficit. It it's not a deficit model, right? It's more of an acceleration model. Because, you know, in the old days, what used to happen is if you had special ed, sometimes you you, all of your whole program would be special ed. You spend most of your day out with the special education teacher. That's not the concept here. The concept is you are in the classroom accessing the general curriculum like all of your peers. And our job is to figure out ways to provide extra for the kids that need it on either end of the spectrum. At the same time as, because because what you don't want is you don't want kids going backwards. If you're getting half of the curriculum, how is it you ever think you're potentially going to catch up? Right? And these are not necessarily dis- these are not disabled kids necessarily, who who find learning difficult. These are students who, for one way or for another reason or another, are having difficulty. Maybe not enough exposure, maybe they require a different way to teach it, maybe their learning style is more concrete. You know, maybe they need um extra help processing, maybe they need study, you know, there's just a lot of things that, you know, they might just need more exposure. They just haven't had enough.
Condition that we all have strengths and weaknesses.
So it's, but it's it it stems from, you gotta have the assessment, right? You gotta know that there's potentially something you need to remediate. But it could be that you have students who have, you know, reading difficulties but no math difficulties. Right? And maybe a progress monitoring for doing an intervention, progress monitoring of six weeks, the the child's made up the gap.
Yeah.
Right? So that's why it's it's individualized.
And the same thing in the year, the non-academics, the behavioral piece. You know, some kids, as we like to say, just don't know how to do school. So it's a matter of just really giving them an understanding of appropriate behaviors um in school and working with them and tracking them in those areas. So it's really looking at a whole child. What is the whole child approach that we're taking for all of our students and working together? Um and again, because it is such a big initiative that we want to make sure that our teachers are all involved in the entire process and have a voice in what's happening as well. So we had, last Friday was a half PD day. And so we brought Dr. Bates back again um with the teachers. We did some presentations on where all of the subcommittees are. So again, everybody's coming along and learning as we're going forward. The third grade team specifically worked with Dr. Bates on, okay, here's our data. We want to try and implement something, can you help us out? And he sat and worked with them. They uh did a phenomenal job of putting a presentation together then for their peers of, here's what we did. Here's how we've started formulating what we consider professional learning community. Um and it was so well received. The other teachers were really intrigued and asking questions and you know, it was just, it was a great afternoon for everybody. So that's where we are. We have more to do and we'll be letting you know.
Very exciting. Thank you so much.
It is. It is very exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Thanks, Donna.
Okay, um financial report. We have the Georgetown electric bill. And that's for the turf field.
Yeah, so is it the second invoice? I have them on a warrant if you want.
This should do it for invoices on the, well, actually.
There's still a little quirk. The original contract, we still have outstanding things on that, but probably won't be done till the spring.
Do you require all three?
Yeah.
Yeah. Um and that's, that will get paid out when everything is, you know.
Did you give this spreadsheet out at the staff meeting?
Yeah.
I did, okay. Barbie, are you going to talk about that Barbie when you get to the subcommittee? Okay, so we'll talk about it then.
Is this regular, what what does this actually cover? What's?
The the two invoices?
The the light department one.
The light department was, there was some issues with neighbors' concerns over the lights.
Right.
So they came out a couple of times and tested the lights. So that's the cost for that.
Okay.
And then um, I'm not sure about the um EJP. I think that um.
That had to do with something Peter Durkey was working with.
Yeah, it says straw, so I don't know what that is.
I think it was when they covered the, they, when they brought the dirt up, you know, and they put the rye, winter rye, I think, on it in order for the birds not to eat it all. They covered it with hay or straw. And I think Peter Durkey sort of helped with that. And then the the bill for that should come out of the project.
Okay, so um the chairman entertained a motion to approve payment of one seventy-five eighty-one to the Georgetown Unit for Light Department. As presented.
So moved.
Second. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the chairman entertained a motion to approve payment of EJP uh Inc. invoice four eight nine five four nine eight in the amount of two eighteen seventy-five.
So moved.
Second, picking up, watching it.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Thank you. Um so you also have a copy of the the second quarter um budget report. I did implement a freeze. I was a little concerned about special ed. I'm actually lifting the freeze. I don't really want them to hear you. So. Because they're going home. But I want, just if if anybody.
So when did you do that?
I didn't do it yet. I'm thinking of it.
So where did you implement it?
Oh, probably in late November.
Yeah, November. It was the fall.
Well, there was a lot of.
There were moving parts, so we just said.
Special edu- education situations that I was worried about, so we implemented.
Okay.
Um we're doing okay.
No, you're good, Donna.
We're doing okay right now, as you could see in the first page, with special ed. But if you, if you look at the back page, it it's um, it says our current available balance is four hundred and ten thousand. That's somewhat misleading, even though we encumber all our uh purchase orders and we encumber all our salaries. There are certain lines we can encumber. We don't encumber substitute teachers, we don't encumber student activities. We don't encumber tuition reimbursements until somebody signed up for a course. So there are accounts that we don't have any, any room to, you know, to say, oh, we might not spend that. We don't know that till we get closer to the end of the year. So I went through and I looked at all those accounts and when I, at the end of the day, it looks like we have a hundred and eighty, about a hundred and eighty-eight thousand. That if I lifted, they're all gone, if I lifted the freeze, then they would be free to spend. But I haven't said no to anybody yet. It's just one more step they're taking before they do a purchase order. They email me, say why they need something. Just, they put more thought into it right now, but again, the budget was designed to support their school, so I hate to, you know, have to freeze it, but we don't know for sure what our special ed education costs are till April first. After April first, then we know that we're not going to get hit with anything else, so. I'm always cautious.
Because everything's encumbered by then, right?
We like that you're cautious.
Yes, yes, we do. We appreciate that.
The substitute lines
Yep.
seem way out of whack. Is that, is that? What what's happened?
Which which line?
The, on the second page, the.
So the district substitute line? Now, we did encumber, any long-term subs we know about is encumbered in that. So if you look, our year-to-date expended is only thirteen thousand. But we know for a fact that from now till June, we have another twenty-five thousand that is encumbered.
Right.
Um but that doesn't necessarily mean we won't have someone go out on sick leave right now. So we still have twenty-two thousand. And if you look, I increased that. We budgeted thirty.
Right, I guess.
Last year I spent ninety. So when we built the budget, I put sixty in.
Right, yeah. I guess my question is is we're budgeting thirty but kind of expecting sixty-one.
You don't know from, for any given year, you really don't know. We just had a teacher go out now. She was going to be out, I think, six or eight weeks and something else happened and now she's going to be out another two months and you just don't know. You can't, and last year, the ninety thousand was, we got killed with maternity leaves.
It was maternity leaves, yeah.
Yeah, so so often when we, often when we, we build the budget, what we'll do is we'll look.
Yeah, so often when we, often when we, we build the budget, what we'll do is we'll look at three-year histories.
Right.
Right? For most, this is just a, this is just a volatile line. Because you, you, we, we generally know, cause people are pregnant for nine months. If they tell us early, we sort of know, okay, next year we know we're gonna need a long-term sub for three months, or whatever it is. But, you know, we have had some situations, family, you know, FMLA kind of situations, that we couldn't have anticipated, so... It is, it is a, it is a line that we, it's a crapshoot area.
Yeah.
And we just try to watch it.
Right.
Yep.
We don't have too much control.
Nope, we have no control.
In some years, it's not, you know, when we have budgets, it's fine.
Right, yeah. But I think, I think in the past, we woefully underbudgeted substitutes.
Absolutely, I agree with that.
We're building the budget, we say, oh, we should probably should increase it, but if we do, it increases our bottom line too much and...
Yeah, or you, or something else you need has to be cut. So, yeah, it's always, those are decisions that always tricky.
But I feel, I feel confident right now. I'm not worried, worried as long as Dr. Straight doesn't show up in my office with a replacement or...
No, I think that we, we're, we're pretty clear on who's on the radar.
Well, that's the thing you have to worry about.
Well, actually, yeah, there's two new families moving into the high school I just sat in on meetings on, so, yeah. Definitely, I mean, you can't always control that for sure.
And I, I think I mentioned, um, I'm not sure if I mentioned it to the committee. I know I mentioned it to Carol. I was a little worried about our school choice funds. I don't know if I talked about it last time. For some reason, the state had us recorded very low on how many students that we had incoming for school choice. So luckily, through, um, Mary Ellen Cronin, who handles our SIMS data, um, we showed one number. We showed thirty-seven kids, and the state was reporting that we're only gonna have twenty-five kids. That's a huge deference, because it's five thousand dollars a student. So she went back at them and back at them, you know, two or three times, and finally they did correct it. So our school choice is actually gonna be higher than we projected. That was because we opened up those slots in the kindergarten, some of the high school. So, yeah, so we, we have more school choice than we had planned on.
And the budget, the budget calendar?
So we adjusted the budget calendar based on the, um, budget subcommittee meeting we had. But then we'd be able to present the budget. So right now, we're gonna, um, present it to the full committee on February twelfth. So, um, I think that's earlier. I think originally I, I think I might have put the twenty-sixth.
You did, you had it, you had it this meeting, yeah.
Right, and so then, you, uh, so the public hearing will be on February twenty-sixth with continued discussion from the school committee. And then we hope to plan a special meeting of the school committee for budget adoption on March fifth.
And will that be updated on the website?
Yeah, I think Barry already, yep. Laura did it, yep, Laura already did it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And, and can we move off the website, the FY, the old stuff? FY thirteen.
Well, I should say I'll move it, cause I haven't, I haven't been taught how to do any of that stuff, but I'll ask Laura to do it.
Thanks. I think that's it. Okay, thank you. Um, so we do have to make a motion to adopt that?
Yeah, we do, yeah.
Okay, um, chairman entertained a motion to adopt the revised budget timeline for the FY sixteen budget.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Okay, um, subcommittee reports. So budget, how did it's met?
We did.
Yep, we met on January twelfth.
Minutes.
We did an overview of the budget and spent a lot of time talking about some of the new position ads, a lot of time on bus runs.
Yep.
But I think it's creative. Sort of stop the double bus runs and start to charge for, um, other individuals that may be interested.
And if we have spots on the bus, yeah.
If you have spots, then do it by a lottery and...
So when would we know that? If, if there were spots available?
Well, first we have to, we have to go through the bidding process.
I did.
I mean, I mean, right now, we're talking about, you can always decrease the number of buses, and I guess you can increase them too. But, um, seven buses is what we're, what we've got in the bid, right? So...
Typically, we have five.
Typically, so what would then have to happen would, would be we'd have to know, people would have to read. First Barry would work with the bus company on the routes. And then we would figure out, based on the best of our ability, how many people would register to ride the bus on certain routes. And then we would be able to say, okay, there's twenty spots on bus one and...
But I'm just trying to think, when we've done that? Like, in the summer is when we pick up our bus passes, I know that. But when do we actually have to tell you that we're taking the bus?
Well, we can make that, we can adjust that. So I think the first thing is we have to figure out what the bus bid is gonna be in that, cause the first priority is getting it in the budget, right? Because it could be a swing of a hundred thousand dollars.
Can I ask why we increased it to seven?
Because we're trying, because we're, we're, five isn't enough, really. And we don't wanna do a double bus run. So we can take, we can keep five, but now we've got, we're, cause the bus routes changed, because now we don't have Pearly. So everybody's going to Pembroke. Plus, we're, we're hopeful that if we do the, if we do, um, get the buses at a reasonable cost, then what can happen is we can have, uh, shorter bus runs and more people will take the bus. Because literally, they won't have no, and we will be able to cut costs by not having people babysitting children an hour before school starts or an hour after school starts while they wait for their bus run. So we're, we're, we're just thinking overall, it might, it won't save costs, but it, but it'll be more efficient.
To get the kids to school closer to the school.
Now, if, if the bus bid comes in and it's prohibitively expensive, right, then we have to have a different discussion, right? But this is, we're moving to a new school. It's the time to, to do the buses right, so...
What's, what's the net change in the number of students, with all the school moves and everything, with the number of students riding the bus?
I don't know, because...
I was gonna say, I'm, I...
Because if it's the one point five miles, you know, there could be students eligible for Pearly right now that won't be eligible for Pembroke or vice versa. We don't know that. The bus, Barry and the bus company are actually looking and building routes now, draft routes. But, um, we don't, you know, it depends on how many, depends on how many, um, buses we have too. Based on how we design the routes.
Not for how many little...
Not for how many are eligible. I guess that's, like, I'm, I'm curious...
I don't think you'll see the number change much, cause your schools are all so close.
Yeah, I mean, it may, it may change a little.
If your new school was across town, your numbers would go out of whack. But they're all within a mile.
And it's moving a hundred yards or whatever.
We, we can, we can have Barry come and report on that when we are ready to talk about buses. Because we, and we always have many more people eligible than actually ride. And we have numbers of people who register and get a bus pass and never ride the bus. So it's, it is sort of a difficult number to quantify. And I mean, we looked into, you know, can you do a non-refundable, you know, fee to just apply to get the bus? And that's not illegal, it's not legal. So, especially if you qualify to ride the bus. So, cause we thought maybe you wouldn't commit your money.
Encouragement.
If, if you weren't gonna ride the bus. So it's, the buses are another topic that will take us a long time.
At half an hour, forty minutes before school starts.
It's not educationally sound, I've said that since I came here, but...
Then you may see more riders. I, I think...
You might, you, you might. So, you know, we, I think we can talk about the buses when we have more information.
The bid will be in, um, the bids are due in February eleventh. So I'll have a number for the budget. Now, if it's cost prohibitive, well, then you have to make a decision.
We have to decide.
Do we have to go out to bid just for five buses?
Cause, cause the goal is, based on what the town administrator has asked us through whatever boards we have, is to hit two and a half percent. Right? That's the number. And, um, you know, if, if, you know, if we're doing a level services budget, which is what we were asked to do, and if we wanted to add anything new, we needed to be able to defend it. So that's what we did last year, remember, with the, with the tech director. That was not a, like, level services, um, topic or item. So if we have to put a hundred thousand dollars more cost of buses in, then that's gonna, that's gonna determine that we're up to reduce something else. Right? So that we're trying to hit the number.
If we go out to bid for seven, but then comes back high, we only want five, do we have to rebid that? Or is that just an adjustment to...
I thought they said we could adjust it down.
Right, I'd, I'd have to, I'd get a ruling from the Inspector General's office. You know, you would be able to tell, because they divided by how much, what they charge per bus.
We would know the answer before, right.
Yeah, you'd be able to build your budget off that.
And I guess nobody would realistically come in for five buses that didn't come in for seven buses.
That's the point. There's not a lot of competition for our bus bids, because we're just too little. We're, we're just like, when you're talking these big, you know, districts that have twenty, thirty buses, and here we are with our little five.
I think I've had five inquiries to get the bid spec checked.
Oh, well, that's, that's actually much better than...
I don't have the money to go to buy our own buses.
Oh, no you don't Barbie. That's not, I mean, that, that's not as easy as you think, because then you have to get insurance, and you have to worry about maintenance, and you have to have bus drivers that, what do you do when somebody's out? It's, it's, uh, it's a lot more complex than you think. I'm not sure we wanna take that on. Although I wouldn't mind, although I wouldn't mind, I've seen some districts at these auctions or whatever, buy a bus. And then they use that bus to transport a lot of their athletic teams, field trips. Because right now, when we send, let's say we send our fourth grader, whatever, to Plymouth Plantation, it's a very costly bus cost. You know, so if you had the ability to use a bus to, to alleviate some of that, to alleviate some of that. So, you know, there are all kinds of creative solutions. So we, we have to get it, we're having another meeting. We have another meeting scheduled.
Yeah, I think Laura, you have some dates. I, I haven't seen a confirmation.
I think it was Tuesday.
I think it's Tuesday night, yeah.
Right, cause Joan, Joan and I should be in a position to have whatever draft budget. We should have that ready by then.
Lucy came late today. It should be fine.
Yeah.
Did you send out a confirmation?
So we will definitely be ready to present to you on the twelfth. And then usually, uh, Sandy, or the FinCom, usually asks us, uh, when I present the budget to you, even though you haven't, like, approved it yet, they usually ask, you know, can you give us that salaries, non-salaries and special ed numbers? And that usually helps them to plug a number into the budget. But Mike said he plugged in two and a half percent for the schools. That's, he already told, he said that at a department head meeting.
That was nice of him. Okay, was, is that it for budget finance? Okay, we'll go governance. Were you meeting before we came in?
Yes, yes, we just met. And, um, we had a very, very productive meeting. We, uh, discussed, well, we, we did come to some conclusions, right?
We are gonna get a concussion policy out of this, I guarantee, at some point, right Pam? Pam's doing extensive research on this.
That's right, and it will take a little bit more time, but we are making some, taking some specific steps.
Yep.
Um, we did get to every item on the agenda, so, um, I'll just first say we're looking... Yes.
They were big, though.
Well, we only have an hour. Actually, it's a little bit less than that, so, you know. Anyway, okay, so the first was JH, student absences and excuses. It's a discipline policy. And we, we reworked the language a little bit on this, and so we're going to look at that again after we've, um, made it another draft of it. The other discipline policies we're looking at, um, we just wanna make sure that it's in line with the, the newest legislation. And we're gonna, are we gonna get Naomi to help us with that?
Yeah, we'll, we'll get some, we'll definitely, MASC, I really wanna see what they, what they're producing. Cause they are, they have their own legal team that, uh, puts together policies that are in line with Massachusetts law. We need more information. We'll definitely, I wanna look at our, our handbook too, because as I told you, our attorney, Matt McAvoy, has already made those adjustments of the law in the handbook. So I, I'm wondering if it's just, uh, I'll, I'll talk to the right people and we'll get the answer.
Okay, that sounds good. Right, and then, so we were also looking at the concussion policies. And, um, so we already, we have one concussion policy. And MASC, which is the Mass Association, Massachusetts Association of School Committee, have, they've recommended another policy, a different policy regarding concussions. And we began to look at the differences between these two, uh, since the last meeting. And we realized that the JIF and the JJIFR, um, specifies the impact testing. It talks about that. The policy that we have right now does not. And so that's, I, I personally like that about this policy. But the actual step that we're going to take is we're going to ask Chris DiFranco to look over these two policies. And, you know, see what he thinks are the strengths and weaknesses of this versus what we have. And we are also going to continue to consider that and try to come to a decision at our next meeting, which one we're going to recommend and go forward with. Yep. So that's that. And then one other, oh, the domestic violence policy review. That's the one we were gonna get Naomi's approval on.
Yeah, that's a new policy that came, the recommendation. Yeah, yeah, I think we looked at it, but we, we, it's a new policy, so we didn't really have much to compare it to.
Right.
Yeah, so if, if it's approved by MASC, I think we just wanted to run it by Naomi and just as, and just say, is this a, do we have your blessing on this? And, you know, go for there, that...
Just, and another reason I like the MASC recommended policy, the JJIF, is because it really specifies the responsibilities of a lot of different parties, you know, in more clearly and in greater detail than the policy we have now. And there's been a, a lot happening in the world of concussion research and concussion legislation and policies, so...
So we're just going for Chris's, um, his opinion, but not necessarily are you going to go with what he said?
I want him to show the, I want him to show it to the trainer too. No, no, I just want him to read it to be, like, how consistent is it with our current practice? And, you know, I just, I just wanna make sure he's aware of, you know, what would maybe be being recommended. And, you know, I'd like him to show it to the trainer too, cause I wanna make sure that it's consistent with what we're doing.
They're complicated policies. They're like nine, ten plus pages each, so it's not like they're two-page policies. So to really get a sense of them and compare and contrast and see, you know, what's gonna work best for us, and, uh, it takes a little bit of time.
That, that's completely uncharacteristic. Those policies, you can tell it's a controversial issue.
Yeah.
Because that is not consistent with how policies generally work. Policies are generally statements, you know, broad, general statements, and they're not really procedural.
It's almost like the Lice Policy. Remember, we went through that, and that's ages.
Pages, yep.
And that's procedural, but you...
But that's, but a lot of that is because, you know, there are some issues that are hot, you know, statewide too.
But it's really, it's really very helpful to, to nurses and, you know, to the athletic trainers, everybody to have a document that says, this is the procedure that we, you know, believe you should be following.
Right, right, absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, negotiations, we did meet last week, things are going well. Uh, we'll talk more about that in executive session. Um, public relations?
Public relations. We have an upcoming meeting. I saw it on my calendar, so is it next week?
It's next Friday.
January thirty-first, is it?
Thirty?
Thirty.
Oh, thirty, that's two weeks, no, that's next week.
Twelve noon.
Yes.
Okay.
Carol's office. Yes.
And safety hasn't met?
Nope.
Okay, school building?
School building. Okay, yes, we met on January thirteenth. And we started out with the middle high school. We are on budget. In fact, we're at twenty percent, that, twenty thousand dollars under budget at this point, um, which is actually good for this budget. The advertisement for the bids are gonna go out on January twenty-seventh. Uh, the bids will actually be awarded in March. Our new rooftop heating units, condensers will be, definitely be in before the new roof is installed in April, which is, that's what Mike was telling us about, that he was going out and getting those. Jim Luker is very understanding of the issue of non-reportable naturally occurring arsenic, and so the report will be modified from green seal. Minor drainage work will be done in the upper fields in August. And we just made note that the sports schedules are gonna have to be modified or need to work around this, this drainage. So then we moved on to the Pembroke. A lot's happening there. Budget-wise, we're in very good shape. The shed is gonna be covered by the contingency fund, which right now, the contingency fund is at four hundred eleven thousand dollars. Right where it should be. The site work is almost wrapped up. The loam and capping is completed around the new building, the septic field is completed, the entrance sign also. The elevator's installed, the boilers are running. Uh, a lot of the electrical work is, is a big focus right now. It's sixty percent complete, as opposed to a lot of the other systems are about ninety percent complete. But the electrical work is, comes along a little bit later. The contractor is absorbing the damage from the vandalism. We did have a flooring issue regarding the linoleum on the third floor. Apparently, it was, the contractor did not, uh...
Apparently, it was, the contractor did not quite use enough sand between the adhesive and the concrete, nor did they allow the adhesive enough time to dry. Um, so there are bubbles in the linoleum. It, it's a, a for, it's a process of, of application. So, it first goes the concrete down and then the moisture mitigation, then the sand, then adhesive, then linoleum. So, this is all gonna be fixed at the contractor's expense, but it will take about a month and it'll cause about a month delay.
The, the project spent a significant amount of extra money to do this moisture mitigation. They didn't have to do it. It wasn't required, but they wanted to make sure that they covered all the bases. So, the fact that this is on hold right now is important because nobody wants to spend money and then have issues with the floors because of the fact that all this extra money was for naught. So, you know, they, they are, the O P M and the, the architects have really been holding people's feet to the fire. This was not great. This was a subcontractor.
From Texas.
Yeah, so, so right now the discussion is whether or not they have to rip anything up or whether or not, you know, they just need to remediate it going forward, so.
Right, and because we are generally ahead of schedule, the month delay is not gonna be really impactful, so. The furniture and fixtures have gone out to bid. All the teachers did have significant input. The desks and the computers will arrive in May. The library tables and chairs are almost the only furniture that are going to go from the old Pembroke to the new Pembroke. People were wondering about those beautiful, beautiful tables and chairs that I am very fond of. And many other people are as well.
They're going to the treehouse.
They're going to the treehouse. They're gonna have an honored place in the new school, but not much else will. The committee voted to approve a contractor for installation management to make sure the furniture and fixtures are going to the right place for thirty days. So, that was fifteen thousand dollars and seven, about that.
But that protects the town.
Right, so when all the boxes come in, there's going to be, you know, people there who are gonna know exactly where those boxes need to go and make sure everything gets to the right place.
And they'll inspect everything, make sure there's no damage, you know.
Okay.
It's a safeguard.
We're gonna have, and Mike talked about the moving company that would help us organize crates. The existing, and then we spoke about technology. Not everything about technology. It wasn't a full technology report, but it, you just, you mentioned that the existing smart boards are going to go to the new Pembroke with new projectors and new lights. Is that what it means, new projectors? Okay. Every classroom in K through three will have a smart board. We'll have laptop carts. The upper grade classrooms will also have interactive whiteboards. Grades five and six will have iPads and keyboards for every student. The PCs will be in a computer lab. The IMAX in the library. We'll have PCs in the administrative offices. Only existing technology, three years or, or newer, will go to the new school. And our next meeting is.
And what's had a saying that, like that timeframe?
We've all planned. We've been meeting extensively and, yeah, everybody's.
Is that gonna take a three or something? For a computer.
Right, but generally speaking, we keep things for fifteen years.
Yeah, I know, I know.
So, three things, you're right, it's a relative. They become obsolete pretty quickly, yeah.
And our next meeting will be Tuesday, February tenth.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Sure. Do you have any questions?
How long are those meetings?
They vary.
Two hours?
Two hours, yeah.
We're usually out of there by nine thirty at the latest, usually.
Yeah, they vary a lot.
And CPAC hasn't met?
Yep, CPAC did just meet, actually, yes. We had a wonderful meeting last night. It was a transition workshop, which was, the keynote, the speaker was Carrie Mahoney of the Massachusetts Arc. She, for many years, was headed up the Greater Haverell and Newburyport Arc, but she has now moved on to the state. And she spoke a lot about, you know, what parents of, of older, older children with students with disabilities need to be thinking about when a student with disability is thirteen years old. You write a transition plan into the I E P. And there are just many, many options, many, many services. Everything is changing in, in the legal world all the time about the benefits that they have available, the services that they have available to them. And so she tried to bring us a little bit up to date that way. She offers ser- services herself, consulting. And let's see, services, transition from school to adult life timelines.
And was the attendance?
It was great. We had over twenty people. We had people from Haverell. We had all kinds, you know, parents from other communities and a lot of people. It was good. And, you know, yeah.
Thank you.
And then, let's see, the next meeting is, the next CPAC meeting is February twelfth. This one is in North Andover at the North Andover Middle School, and it'll be about financial planning.
Okay, we have a meeting that night?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, the stack committee met to, uh, talk about the field, which looks beautiful. Um, so we just kind of tied up some loose ends. We talked about the, um, you can add, I can pull up. So, we talked about the scoreboard, whether we should, two different option for sizes. And we talked about, um, Chris DiFranco did a great job already, like the next day, he and Mrs. Dodge?
Yep.
Okay, he talked, she's the other, she's an art teacher.
She's an art teacher, yeah.
Okay, so they talked about like putting the Lancer, like where that would look good on the, on the scoreboard and how big it should be and, you know, just to kind of figure out the best look for that scoreboard. We talked about, oh, so we have forty-four thousand left over. So, that will be used for the installation of the scoreboard, which I didn't know it was gonna be that much much. I just didn't, I didn't think that.
Well, it's a big scoreboard.
It is a big scoreboard.
And they're big holes.
And my husband explained to me what thirty yards of cement is. He's like, what? I'm like, yeah.
Well, that's why Peter Durkey said, what?
Yeah, it, it's a lot of, and Peter Durkey, um, has graciously offered to dig the holes, you know, his group to dig that, which will be quite a cost savings.
That is.
So, that, that was very nice. Um, what else did we talk about?
The mound. Would you want to tell me?
The mound, oh, so we did the alternates. We figured, we figured in the alternates. So, the alternates will be, um, the portable mound, padding for the posts.
There's a couple places where the field is kind of tight to the fence, so we want to make sure that we provide a buffer.
Yeah, um, the padding and then the.
They had a portable fence, because they're gonna use it for different levels of, of play. So, they had that.
And then the soccer nets.
The soccer nets, because we have soccer nets, but they, if the budget will allow, it'd be nice to have, you know, nice soccer nets.
Yes.
We need better soccer nets.
And then we talked, we're also looking into a, um, you know, to put the G, a stencil, to see how much that is. We don't really have an idea yet of how much that's gonna be. So, we'd like to do that because I think that's important for the kids, but believe it or not, we don't have an official G. So.
Because we have the Lancer.
Yeah, we have the Lancer, but if you notice, like kids do have, like they have a G, and Chris was saying that they're, if you look at them, they're different. Then, so he's going to talk to our awards people who give like the Gs, the athletic letters, to see if we can figure out if our real G. And there was a punch list.
Would we need to vote on that?
No.
No.
Or to make it the official G? But there was a punch list, and we didn't have that available from, from Lindsay. So, the punch list, actually what they did when they did the walkthrough and saw like, you know, what needs to be done. So, we can get that. Did you get, did you?
No, we thought, the other thing I think you could mention is we talked about locking the field versus not locking the field, so.
Yeah, and John Pinguery from the G A A, um, he does not want it to be locked. And, and he was pretty much like, I want the kids to play on it whenever they can. Obviously, if the school or, you know, but he would love to see like kids just go over there and enjoy it, which I thought, you know, at first I'm like, no, it has to be locked. And then just listening to him and like Carol had said to him that night, you know, the G A A has been so.
Well, no, that's the other thing we did discuss is signage. Because, you know, in the documents that we get for the closeout, there's warranties. So, if you don't, if you don't meet the warranty and something happens, you know, you're not gonna be covered, so, you know.
The gain of range.
So, it had, had to do with sports drinks. It had to do with, actually, I think the sign was gonna be like no food or drink. But, but we probably do need to accentuate the sport, the sports drinks, because they will stain the field. You know, the sort of no pets would be another, and there was one other. I'll think of it. There was one other that, um, the recommendation and the warranty.
Well, I can, I have a copy of them on my return.
Yeah, and apparently there's a local sign person who is willing to do it. So, that's more, that's moved up sort of on more of a priority list, especially with people using the field. But we did say we'd keep the, there's two gates. There's a big gate, like that Mike can drive a tractor through.
Or an ambulance would drive it.
There are an ambulance, and then there's just a sort of a walk-in gate. So, the walking gate would be open, but the other gate would be locked. So, we don't have people driving on the, driving on the field.
And then we talked about the keys, who would, who would have rights to the keys, which would be the school, like Mike. I think we agreed, police.
Yep, fire.
Fire, and someone from G A A would also have a key, and John didn't know who that would be at this point. But it was a really nice meeting because it was, it was, um, it was a big project that really had some ups and downs. Like we, there were, there was a time that I really didn't think it was gonna happen. So, it was nice to actually go there and, and see that it had, you know, to see that it actually worked out and how happy the kids are and how happy the community is. I, I know I've seen and heard from people that are just thrilled with it, because it does look so nice.
We could talk about doing some kind of a, some kind of a ceremony, an opening ceremony in the spring with a dedication to the Jim Collimer Field in the fall when, when we have our baseball, our football season.
Yeah, they thought it was appropriate, for football, because he was a football coach, so.
Yeah, that would be good, yeah.
That'd be great.
So, it was a really great group to work with.
Yeah.
Really was.
So, that's it with that. Okay, F Y sixteen priorities.
So, we put this on because we sort of didn't do this step and, you know, I don't necessarily think, because I know in the interest of time tonight, you know, we, we still have a executive session. You know, that it's more important for the budget and finance subcommittee, you know, to get your thoughts on it. As I threw in there sort of what the adminis, how we, we always play that role at the administrative level, you know, this is what we think the budget priorities are, but it is really the school committee's budget ultimately, right? So, we want to be sure that we hear from you as to what you think the priorities are, you know. So, if there are things that you were hoping to see in the budget or if it's important to you that, you know, you protect the level services, if you believe the custodians of Pembroke are a priority, you know, it would just be good to, you know, give the committee an opportunity to talk about what their priorities are. And then the subcommittee and us will, will integrate those into, you know, the development. Yeah, I think, I think, yeah, we could do that. They have people email.
They're meeting next Tuesday.
We are. Yeah, so if you have thoughts on it, you might want to do that sooner than later. So, we could take that into consideration when we're putting together the final touches on, you know, if there's something we missed, we can take a look at where it might go.
Okay.
Okay?
Don't you have a shortlist as well, Carol, of things you know, like you couldn't get into this year?
Uh, well, actually, yeah, I think we, we probably do. I mean, pretty much if it's a level services budget. You know, they, we could always use more supplies, but, you know, pretty much there's things we know we have to put in. Like, we really need to put two custodians, have to be reflected somewhere.
What do you mean by supplies?
Well, you know, we, we sort of cut back on, you know, parents still supply a lot of supplies and, you know, we, you know, we have textbook money, but we always sort of take, take that out if we need to have wiggle room and, you know. We could always, we're adding new curriculum, so we've been taking it out of school choice. Arguably, that would be nice to have it in, some of it in the budget. So, you know, it, it's always trying to move the shells in the most effective way to hit the bottom line. But generally speaking, I can say honestly, in the last, I'd say the last three or four years, we really haven't had a long wish list from the principals of what it is they want.
We're getting so much next year. I mean, it's hard to, it's hard to like, when you have so much new.
That's right, exactly. You don't need as much, yeah.
Well, it's hard to even conceive of what you need. I think next year, once we've been through a school year at the new school and we see like what it feels like at the middle high school, those are the kids there in Pembroke, then it's gonna be easier to imagine, oh, we should have, why didn't we do this? And we need this, and now we should try to get this. But I think now, because you face all this change and transition, it's, it's very hard to predict.
It is, and as you said, there, there is a, 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 a good amount of new stuff.
Yeah.
You know, so some of the direction of resources, you know, will start pointing more at the high school if there's things that need to happen, particularly in the area of technology. Because Pembroke will be in very good shape, I think.
This might be sort of conversation for the, the subcommittee, but I think it would be helpful to have, similar to the capital planning, kind of the five-year rolling, this is where we're trying to go. Because it's easy to set priorities, yeah. It's easy to set priorities for next year. We really want the new custodian, whatever that is. But to know that five years from now, we're gonna need whatever it is, I think would be really helpful.
Yeah, I think we should definitely do that at the subcommittee level. Sure, the town would appreciate that, too.
Like Lana said, I think just getting that going in a substantial manner will be a lot easier next year. Me, I think level services this year is really, really important because we just, you know, I don't wanna, we just don't know what's, what's going to happen. I don't want to cause anybody any great, you know, party. But to me, I want to support the academic curriculums. And we're gonna know a lot more about how that will work after the, the, you know, after a year from now. After the kids are in the new school.
I think one of the things you could even point to is that we had, there were so many problems with fields. Everybody wanted upgraded fields, new fields, and it's happening, but we don't know yet. We don't know yet. Like, have we met all our needs in that regard? I know, you know, priority, get the kids outside, right? Then that's gonna happen next year, so is it gonna be enough, is it gonna be? We don't know. Those are.
Oh, yeah, no, that's, absolutely. I'm just a, I'm a budget planner person.
Yeah, I like the long-range plan.
You know, if you want to get from point A to point B, it's a lot easier to do it in five years than one, or not at all.
Very true.
Okay, so we just have a few policies that we need to adopt. So, I'm sure you've had a chance to take a look at them. So, I will entertain a motion to adopt policy E F C A, mail charging policy as presented.
Can I ask a quick question, actually, before we? If a student does not have an account, essentially, there's, there's no money in the account and doesn't typically eat lunch from the school, is, does this say, and it could be the current policy, but is this to say that they can always get a lunch on any given day and will sort of figure it out later?
That's, right, they can get a lunch.
Okay, so if they forget it, they forget their lunch at home or, or that kind of thing.
Right, I don't think that's the issue, though.
Right, no, no, understood.
They would need to pay for it the next day, right? I mean, it's just not a free lunch.
Right, oh, no, absolutely. They would have a deficit in their account.
Nobody's turned away.
Right.
Nobody's turned away for eating. But the, the, the problems we're having are not with.
Are not those.
Not with that student stuff.
Okay, uh, so.
I'm good.
Okay. How far did we get? Did anybody say?
You had a second?
A second, whatever we need. Uh, all in favor?
I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you.
So, my recollection from the subcommittee meeting was it would be implemented after February vacation? I think that's what we talked about. Heather asked me that today, okay.
So, our first one, did we have to go back to A? Uh-huh, you have to go to A. I think we skipped the A, did we?
Yeah.
Anti-idling.
Anti-idling.
It's on the back of it.
E E A H, okay. Do you want to entertain a motion to adopt policy file E E A H, anti, anti-idling policy as presented? Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
We should probably report, do you know that we adopted that, because that's one of the required, probably no.
Okay, and we had a very generous donation from Mr. Harry Steliotis. He donated a treadmill to the Georgetown High School, young high school, so that was very nice.
Very nice.
To do that, so we would like to say thank you for thinking of us. I'm sure there were plenty of things he could have done with that treadmill. It was nice that he thought of the school. And I'm sure the kids in the south will love it, so, um, I'll entertain a motion. So I'll entertain a motion to accept the, the donation of a treadmill from Mr. Harry Spiliotis as presented.
So moved.
Second discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you again, that was very nice. Okay, so at this point, at nine twenty, I am going to adjourn the meeting and we will be going into executive session under chapter thirty A, section twenty-one, paragraph three, for the purpose of negotiations, and we will not be returning. So have a good night, thank you.
We'll follow.
Aye.
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 Great, thank you.
Thank you.